The Muscatine City Council will come to order, will begin this evening as always with roll call. Fran?
Councilmembers Lorette.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natbig.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips. Spread. Five present and two absent, your honor.
Thank you, Fran. Folks, would you rise and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to those of you in council chambers tonight. Is anybody in council chambers that has an issue they'd like to discuss with council that is not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come forward to the podium, tell us your name and address, please. Very well, moving along to item five, Consent Agenda. Following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items six A through B, items eight A through C, items nine A through B, filing of communications, which are twelve A through B, and tonight's bill's totaling $1,574,150 and seven cents?
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Bob and a second?
Second.
Second Osama, any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries five zero. Now moving down to item eleven from the city administrator, eleven A. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution relating to the financing of certain proposed projects to be undertaken by the city of Muscatine and establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. The IRS requires that cities identify projects that may be financed in whole or in part through the issuance of general obligation bonds. The city's next bond issue is scheduled for the spring of 2014. The preliminary estimate for the bond issue is $2,360,000. Bids have been received for the Colorado Street Improvement Project and the Airport Hangar Drainage and Security Access Project, and the projected additional local share of the cost of projects has been included as part of this resolution. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Scott?
Second, your honor.
Second Phil, any discussion, council? This is a roll call, beginning with Scott.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the Colorado Street Reconstruction Project. At the October 3rd, 2013 city council meeting, the contract for this project was awarded to higher construction in the amount of $2,849,949.71. It is now necessary for city council to approve the contract and bond for this project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Phil?
Second, your honor.
Second Bob, any discussion? Also a roll call, beginning with Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution awarding and approving the contract for the Logan Street Culvert Extension Project. Three bids were received for this project with a low alternate bid from Hagerty Earthworks LLC in the amount of $53,457. Funding for this project will come from the Collection and Drainage Fund. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Osama, and a second?
Second.
Second Mark, discussion, council?
One question, Mayor. You're saying low alternative bid. Can you define what you mean by that?
Alternate, low alternate bid.
So it wasn't the lowest?
John Lutt, City Engineer. The construction plans and bid were originally set up using a box culvert style. The box is six feet wide and five feet high. After some concrete suppliers started discussing with me that the box concrete was going to be considerably more expensive than a circular culvert of the same cross-sectional area, I added an alternate to the bid so that contractors could bid both, and it just so happens they bid $23,000 less on the job by doing that, so we saved a bunch of money.
Thank you. Anyone else, council? Okay, roll call, beginning with Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution of support for automated traffic enforcement, or ATE devices, as long-term safety tools for the city of Muscatine. The Iowa Department of Transportation is proposing administrative rules concerning ATE devices that would restrict Iowa's cities and counties' use of traffic control cameras. Staff is recommending city council adopt a resolution of support for the continued use of ATEs for long-term community policing. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Bob, and a second?
Second, your honor.
Second Phil, discussion, council? I have a question or two for Greg. I've had, over the past couple of years, not a lot, but a few inquiries about what happens to the revenue that's generated as a result of these traffic cameras. In fact, one recent comment that a gentleman made is, why don't we give it to the Salvation Army? Anyway, my question to you is, Greg, can you break down where that revenue goes?
Well, I can try and break that down for you. If you look in the budget book, it's specifically identified in the police department's budget. You'll see under their revenue, a line item for ATE revenue. This year's budget was around $600,000 in revenue, so it's one funding source for the police department. Police department's budget's about $4.6 million, and ATE revenue accounts for about 13% of that revenue, so it's a large percentage of the police department's budget, or the revenue to fund that budget. You know, in recent years, we've done a lot of good things with the police department. Quick question?
No, if I may add some, just a couple of things. I think as council here, our consensus during the budget was to try to get that money to public safety.
Yes.
And one of the things that we did, if you recall, we purchased a fire truck, or that some of the money went towards purchasing a fire truck as well, so...
Well, the ATE funds are actually specifically dedicated, or line itemed, as revenue under the police department budget. You know, and, you know, council's absolutely correct. We've been able to reinstitute the school resource officer. We used to have two, we went down to one, now we're back up to two, so we have both middle schools and the high school. Street Crime Unit is back up and operating at full speed in the city of Muscatine. Vehicles and equipment have been purchased. Pensions increase on an annual basis. They've been averaging about $230,000 plus or minus, an increase each year. We've been able to keep property taxes down. That's $600,000 that if we were to maintain services at their existing levels, would be on the tax rate. So there's a lot of things that, those cameras. You know, revenue is obviously a part of it, but, you know, as you can see in the information provided in the resolution, those cameras have made a big difference at those intersections. You've got 30% decline in property damage, 32% decline in overall violations issued, 20% decline in overall violations issued from 2012 to 2013, 37% decline in personal injury crashes. That's a big deal, those intersections. And, you know, if I can remind folks of one thing, it's, don't speed, don't run a red light, and you don't pay the ticket, so...
And the quickest answer that you can give, considering the reduction in accidents at all five intersections, if we didn't have that revenue, what would we be forced to do?
There's an easy alternative. You could put five officers at each one of those intersections, and that'd cost you substantially more to accomplish the same effect that you have of placing an ATE camera. I mean, that's an easy answer. By not having officers at each of those intersections, you have them out and about in the community. They're doing community policing, they're getting out of their vehicles, they're doing what they, you know, focusing their time and work can be best spent.
Very good. Anyone else, council? Okay, motion on the floor by Bob, I believe, and a second by Phil. This is a roll call, beginning with Bob.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the airport security gate and camera project. At its October 3rd, 2013 meeting, city council accepted the low quotation for this project from FSS, FSS Incorporated, in the amount of $54,395. It is now necessary to approve the contract and bond for this project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Scott, and a second?
Second, your honor.
Second Osama, discussion? Roll call, beginning with Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item F. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting easements for the Cedar Street Reconstruction Project. The city of Muscatine has proceeded forward, toward the, proceeded toward the installation of a roundabout at the intersection of Cedar and Logan Streets as part of the Cedar Street Reconstruction Project. Additional right-of-way, permanent easements and temporary easements are necessary from two property owners along Logan Street, and they have both gifted the easements and property to the city. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Osama, a second?
Second, your honor.
Second Bob, any discussion? And a roll call, beginning with Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item G. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the fiscal year 2012/2013 annual financial report. This report includes all budgeted funds of the city and was prepared on a budget basis. Revenues and other financing sources totaled $56,921,249 for the year, and expenditures and other uses totaled $59,377, seventy-seven and eight-hundred-and-tw- let me read this again. $59,377,820. Actual city expenditures in each functional area were within the budgeted amounts as required by the state. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Scott, second, anyone?
Second.
I'll give that to Mark, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries five zero. Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Water Pollution Control Plant to approve the purchase of a Lab Annex Muffle Furnace. Two bids were received for this purchase with a low bid for a thermal muffle furnace from Midland Scientific in the amount of $6,226.86. There is $10,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Osama?
Second, your honor.
Second Bob, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Item I. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Water Pollution Control Plant to purchase casework and casework installation. Two bids were received for this project with a low bid from PSA Laboratory Furniture of New Berlin, Wisconsin, in the amount of $84,126. There is $120,000 budgeted for this purchase. It's like something under the Christmas tree for you, John, isn't it? Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Osama, and a second?
Second.
Second Scott, discussion?
Quick question for John. You're mentioning that the old furniture was corroded because of its material construction, so I'm assuming that's been addressed in the...
It was corroded due to the vapors in the lab.
Oh, so you're gonna...
Yeah. The new lab will have 100% air recirculation. The current one has about 50% new air brought in, so the lab just wasn't properly ventilated from the beginning.
Yeah, you mentioned that in here, but, okay, so it's still...
And the new casework, the doors aren't particleboard, where the old doors were made a particleboard, they just kind of fell apart within a few years. What was the other question, I'm sorry?
So the new cabinets and such, are they still steel, or...
I think they're aluminum, a lot of it is aluminum, stainless steel parts, hinges and things like that, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else, council? Oops, thank you, John. Osama with the motion, and Scott with a second, and that concludes the discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries five zero. Item J. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a construction services agreement for the Colorado Street Reconstruction Project. A proposal has been received from Shoemaker Holland in the amount of $62,900, which includes the fees for the construction manager one day a week and associated engineering expenses as needed. This fee also includes the temporary staking of property pins and the reestablishment of control locations. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Bob?
Second.
Second Mark, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries five zero. Item K. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for the 2013/2014 snow removal services in the central business district and city parking lots. Two bids were received with the low bid from Bayfield Snow Removal, whose hourly rate has increased $30 per hour. That's increased by $30 per hour. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved. Mark?
Mark, a second?
Second.
Second Scott, discussion, council?
I do, do you have a question about that, the reason for that big an increase? I first thought it might be it was a typo, but I don't think so. They both had it, I guess.
Hi, Randy.
Randy, how it public works. I talked to both of them, and they said that the increase was due to fuel costs and just the insurance, bump in insurance for their insurances, is what they cited for it.
Anyone else, council? Okay, thanks, Randy. This is a voice vote, folks. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries five zero. Item L. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for a motorized post driver. Two bids were received for this purchase with a low bid from Whitecap Construction Supply in the amount of $3,085. Did not meet the city's specifications, therefore, it is staff's recommendation the bid be awarded to Gerke Robinson in the amount of $4,944.90. There is $5,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
I'll give that to Scott in a second. Is that you, Mark? Okay. Any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries five zero. Item M. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for a four-way snowplow. Two bids were received for this purchase with a low bid from Bonnell Industries in the amount of $6,440. There is $12,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Motion Osama?
Second.
Second Bob, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries five zero. Item N. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Fire Department for the temporary closure of the 300 block of each Ninth Street for a large-scale fire training event. The Muscatine Community School District purchased six, pardon me, purchased six houses for use in future expansion and is allowing the Fire Department to utilize four of the structures for live-fire training. All the proper approvals have been obtained for this training event. Staff is recommending the closure take place on November 16th, 2013, with a contingency date of November 17th, 2013. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Osama, second, anyone?
Second.
I'll give that to Scott, discussion?
Your honor, I've received a couple of phone calls this week in regards to the school fire. Obviously, the school, the community school district purchased the six houses. Who's paying for water, the fireman's time, et cetera, et cetera? And I'm sure Mike's got the answer.
I do have some answers, though. Mike Hartman, the Fire Department. Yeah, the long and short of it is, the property's owned by the school district, and once we're done with it, they're going to take care of whatever cleanup needs to be done with it. Along with that, they've paid for all the preparation of the houses beforehand. The DNR requires certain testing be done and certain things be done to the houses before we actually go ahead and utilize them for the live-fire training. As far as the water, the water's provided by Muscatine Power &amp; Water. We're going to be using the fire hydrants that we use any other time. As far as the cost of the apartment, it's just normal training for us, so whatever overtime we have for the training is coming out of our budget. But quite frankly, there hasn't been an opportunity like this for at least 11 years. When we did Drug Town, we had four houses there. This kind of opportunity just doesn't come around. We are bringing in volunteer departments from throughout Muscatine and Loisa County, probably a handful from Scott County as well. I wouldn't be surprised if we have well over 100 firefighters here and several dozen fire apparatus. So it's going to be an excellent opportunity for us to work with our mutual aid companies and kind of build that relationship we have. And it's one of those things that, you know, live-fire training doesn't come along very long, very often, and when you have the opportunity, we try to take advantage of it, because it's one of those things that you can't, you can't learn how to fight fire by watching TV.
Some of the constituents are asking about DNR permits, pollution. Is there going to be a lot of smoke? Are they going to have to stay inside?
What we're going to do, obviously, everything has been approved by the DNR through the Air Quality Division. That's the state agency that oversees all of this, and that's why we did some of the, had some of the preparation work done that we had to do on it. Yes, there will be smoke. Anytime there's fire, there's going to be smoke. One of the reasons why we're requesting that we have the 17th as a backup date is, if the wind's blowing a certain direction, if things aren't right for us, if it looks like we're going to fill the downtown full of smoke, we're not going to do it. You know, obviously, we care about the residents around the area, so we're going to do what we can to, well, we can't eliminate it, but control it as much as we can. Along with that, we do have, Wapla will be bringing their aerial truck up. We'll have our aerial truck, and we utilize that to kind of help tamp down some of the, some of the smoke and those kind of things as well.
That smoke, will that be going towards Jefferson School, or...
Ideally, it's going to go up and away.
Okay, so we're not worried about stuff going into the school system or around the school system?
Obviously, the school system has been a partner through this whole process, and I know that there's a potential there might be some smoke smell in the school. But again, if the wind isn't blowing, if the wind's not right for us, we're not going to do it.
And the 16th is a Saturday.
Gentlemen, one at a time.
Yes. Yes, this is a Saturday, so, you know, we've been working with the school system. You know, nobody's going to be in the school, well, there'll probably be one or two maintenance guys running around, but there aren't going to be any children in the school, anything like that. So, and part of the process, we're going to go around and talk to all the neighbors in the area and let them know what's going on, kind of explain the process, and, you know, if they don't feel comfortable being in their house that day, you know, we'll work with them to try to figure something out for them.
I think it's going to be a great, tremendous activity for the fellow firemen to actually learn right in their backyard.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we, thank goodness, we haven't had this many firefighters in Muscatine for 100 years. That's, this is the only way to bring that many people in.
Mike, I'm going to ask probably a dumb question. No events scheduled for the Center for Performing Arts on either of those two days?
Not that I know of. I can't say for certain, though.
That might be worth posing a question.
Yes, we'll check into that.
Anyone else, council?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm going to vote in favor of this, because I know it's a great opportunity for you guys, and unfortunately, the houses have already been purchased and stripped of what could be salvaged, but at least one of these houses was a beautiful Victorian home with intricate woodwork, well-maintained, and basically, we're going to build another parking lot, probably. This six houses coming off the tags rolls, and we've got to stop, we've got to stop tearing these things down, and, you know, it's just disappointing to see. I mean, from the city's perspective, I really, outside of the opportunity for the Fire Department to do this training, I really don't see a positive in this, and I hope in the future that we'll make better use of those resources.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion by Osama, second by Scott, voice vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Item 14, communication from council members, but before we start with Councilman Lorette, just a reminder, the city council's goals and objective session will be held on Thursday, October 24th, that's one week from today, beginning at 5:30 in the lower-level conference room of City Hall, and I believe I heard pizza is on the menu.
No.
Sure, but comments?
Brown bag, brown bag.
Let's begin with Councilman Lorette.
Thank you, Mayor. Since this is the last meeting of October, we have an election coming up. First Tuesday next month, Tuesday, November 5th. I encourage everyone to vote. I know it's not as exciting to go vote for city government as it is for presidents and senators, but it's every bit, maybe more, is important since it's your local government. I am running for reelection. The mayor's on the ballot, I think Councilman Natbig and Councilman Bynum as well. and Councilman Bynum as well. I think we've done a lot of good things over the last four years, and I hope you'll keep this group together. But whether you vote for us, or you vote for somebody else, go vote. Thank you.
Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
When you sit to the right of Marky, you can't, you know, he always gets the comments out there first, but I also encourage people to get out to vote on November fifth.
Anything else? Osama?
I have nothing, no, thank you.
Bob?
Your Honor, I'd like to go back about two months ago, there was a gentleman in our midst talking about the cemetery stairs. He gave tonight to me to give to our city administrator another list of names, another thirty-six more names to the long list of his protection, of his petitions. Just to let you know, city of Muscatine, we're waiting for at least two bids on fixing up the cemetery stairs or replacing the cemetery stairs. We're still waiting for those two bids, and if you're a contractor and have, if you have any interest, please contact City Hall, and I'm sure they direct you in that direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bob. Greg?
You stole my thunder on the twenty-fourth, brown bag, no pizza?
Okay.
But yes, we'll see you all there. I don't know if you want to say anything about Sunday's event, but Chinese delegation's coming in.
I will, it's my turn.
All yours.
Fran?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you for asking, though.
Oh, you're quite welcome. Folks, my comments tonight are centered around a gentleman that was here in nineteen eighty-five, a member of a small delegation from Hubei Province in the People's Republic of China, his name is Mr. Bai. Mr. Bai is a retired provincial official in Hubei Province that has taken up photographic art, and he has gifted to the city of Muscatine over one hundred pieces of his photographic art that will be on display at what's referred to now, or at least for the next couple of weeks, as the gallery on Second Street. It's the old Marie Lindsay Furniture Store, and there is a sort of a showing, if you will, from one to four PM, Sunday afternoon, coming up, so if you're into art, photographic art in particular, Mr. Bai, and by the way, there are postcards back on the back table there, please help yourself to one on the way out. Hope to see you there. Is there any other business, counsel? There are motion to adjourn?
So moved.